Roll call. Sarah?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
John?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Nathan here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to say that our thoughts and prayers go out to Travis Bagby and his family. Travis is recovering from an injury he sustained this past weekend, and we wish the best for his speedy recovery. Item three, consent agenda. The motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would like to make some changes to the agenda, please.
All right.
I would like to move item 5B down after item 9A as those two go together.
Okay.
And I would like to move item 9C up to before item 5A. Obviously, that's what most of these people are here for tonight, and I don't see any point in making everybody sit around all night long. Obviously, if you'd like to, we encourage you to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but I just think...
Should we move 9D as well?
Yes. Anything that goes with that would be moved up.
All right.
I just think... So I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes.
Okay, we have a motion with those changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, sigma five by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Public input, number four. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Would anybody like to address the council? Please step forward, state your name.
I'm Charles Russell Franks III, a good friend and fellow officer, was a fellow officer. Like Ricky, I have 13 years in service with the Iowa Department of Corrections, so even the guys on the streets, I can't handle them and put them away, lock them up to where I use the word. So Ricky is a near and dear close friend, and he's a good person on the clock and off the clock, and I would hate to see you let him go, and I would be fearful of what you guys pick next. With that, also 6/26/19, I got in an ATV crash. I'm pretty sure him and his employees are the ones that were rescuing and resuscitating me, so I'm ever so blessed by the Lord and Ricky for saving me that day. So first and foremost, he's a good man on your team. You're simply to get rid of them.
All right. Thank you.
Joe Nelson. My wife and I are lifelong residents of Lisbon, minus approximately five years from moving to Cedar Rapids. We cannot wait to get back to our hometown that we love so much. We had a ton of pride in Lisbon and wanted to get back and raise children here. I stress that we had a lot of pride. While we still do, as well as you all see here, these people have lost pride as well. Having been on the council before, I understand that there are things that the general public are not privy to. I do ask, how the hell did we get here, though? This is ridiculous. Is this all because of police dog that has not kept current qualifications? Let me go back. As a council member, I remember that the police chief was always under the mayor. The mayor was supposed to take care of all the employee reviews, so if an employee review was taken care of, shouldn't we have verified all qualifications are up to date? Rico was an employee of the city of Lisbon. Did he have an employee file? In that file, was there up-to-date qualifications? As a councilman, I sat next to Burl at the table that you guys are at now. I know for a fact that she was not a fan of Ricky, and I would say several instances, things that were totally against Rick and what he was doing. I believe she assumed no one could hear her, but I did. So Rick was already finding out he was bad on. I asked how many employer reviews did she do with Rick? Are they on file? Were they signed by both parties? When Burl was sick, how many reviews were done for Rick? How many were signed and by who? My understanding is the last employer reviews were handled by Congress. Were they done, and have they been signed by both parties? Were they favorable? Was Ricky written up for anything that could result in termination? My understanding is a person cannot be fired by an employer without just cause. So if a person is going to be fired because the dog was not properly certified, it's a joke. Now back to Burl and her being sick. If she was so sick and unable to do her job as mayor, she should have been relieved of her duties and has to step down. Ricky has been here for so many people in this town. He has always shown kindness and compassion for every person in this town. My grandma Smith always looked forward to giving grief to Ricky, and she knew it was always coming back at her. When my mother-in-law died, he was the first to show up and showed great compassion. He knew her as if it was like family. He knows everyone, and everyone knows him. He has taken time out of his personal time to help people. Did he have to? No. He was a person that the school could always count on. The kids looked up to him. I have a six-year-old that looks up to the police chief. How many kids in other towns even know the police chief? He was always on call, sometimes to his own detriment. When he was on call, we felt at ease. We knew we were safe. He was always one of the easiest to work with at times of the city pledge flag. He only asked what was needed, never asked for a dream, never shy to go after grants that would pay for items that were ultimately needed. Ricky is a class act and is being treated so wrong. I'm very upset with each and every one of you. You're treating a pillar of this community like trash. All this was supposed to be done and over with after your services suspension. Yet here we are. I am guessing someone else is behind this, was threatening something if Rick is not fired, that has you all running with your tails, turning legs. I am curious how much money we have paid or returning through all this. We will find out soon as this is printed in the sun. The economic times are tough right now, yet you guys are paying money as out as if the girl's on trees. You know if you guys have a backbone that would stand up for a person who has given every aspect of himself to this city for 15 years and fought for ends instead of being scared of something or someone. The city has to be being threatened with a lawsuit for us to be here tonight. You should all be ashamed. It needs to be said, when you hired a consulting firm to search for a new city administrator, he came into the meeting and said, "You are not ready." But making a long story short, he said, "Your town is a mess." In closing, I believe I speak for everyone who is here that Rick Scott is being wrong. This is a witch hunt, and Rick is a scapegoat for whatever is going on behind the scenes. I hope you all can sleep at night knowing that by firing him, I feel unjustly. You're taking away everything he has worked for. You're taking away his medical insurance, his everything, his insurance that pays for pills that he and his wife need. You guys don't care. There are a couple of you on the council that I've lost all respect for. I hope you feel good about yourselves, as I believe you have lost the town. In this case, we are not behind you, we are behind Ricky. Ricky is one of us, and you treat us like second-rate citizens that have no standing in this community.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. My name is Rod Crosser. I'm an officer of the Lubbock Police Department. Most of you probably don't know me, because mainly what I do is handle training and stuff for the Lisbon Police Department. That's my gear. I'm done. I've been in Lisbon part-time since 2002 or '03 when Malcolm was here. I've watched how Rick has worked over the years, what he's done for this community, and this is ridiculous. The only thing I have to say in parting is, you have a very professional, well-run police department next door. I would start looking there before I look internally for someone to give your police services to. Rick did not deserve this.
Thank you, Rod. Does anybody else have anything different from what's already been said tonight?
I guess I'd like to speak. I'm Liz Olson, and I live down on East South Street. My comments are, what is the main purpose for doing this? Is it because of pending litigation, or are you attempting to save the city money? He's already resigned. So are you trying to save money? Because there are other places you can look to save money. For instance, why on earth would anybody be hiring a full-time Parks and Rec director in a year when we have no help and rent? I have nothing against the person who was hired for the Park and Rec Department. In fact, and I agree that in the future, Lisbon does need somebody full-time, but not this year. Not this year when we don't have a Parks and Rec Department or a program going because of powers out of all of our control. But this year, it didn't need to happen. And like saying, "Well, he still has to mow the lawn, and he can do the fundraising," well, you hired somebody with no fundraising experience. So it just doesn't fly that you would spend that much money for that. And then on the flip side, I am guilty, and maybe the rest of you can too. Do any of you keep personal items at your place of work?
Yeah.
Do you keep personal items at home or at your workplace?
Absolutely.
Do you pay rent to your workplace for those items that you're storing at your workplace? None of us do. We're never accused of stealing space from our workplace. So as far as that goes, the rumors I've heard, some totally bogus, trumped-up charges in an effort to, I don't know, make some vindictive people feel satisfied. That's not the way we treat the people in Lisbon. We take care of the people here. One of the things I noticed when I moved here 20 years ago were a friendly, welcoming community at once. I've lived in five different communities in my adult life, and Lisbon by far exceeded my expectations. Sure, I had friends and acquaintances in the other places that I lived, but I wasn't in Lisbon three months, and I was already being invited to the barbecues and felt like one of you. So thank you, Lisbon. I feel very welcome here. And, you know, I'm a newcomer. I've only been here 20 years. The thing that I admire about this community isn't existing when it comes to this council. So yes, I'm really disappointed. I don't know Ricky personally. I just know him through encounters in his job as police chief, and I've admired him, and I've loved the way the department's been run. And you got this resignation. Let it go at that. Don't be so vindictive. Don't rip away what this man desperately needs right now, which is his medical insurance. Have some compassion. And that's all I have to say.
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carrie Strecker. I have not lived here long, but I am a cop's wife, and I know the job. And it's hard. There are countless hours that are not put in of what everybody sees, unless you're the one having a problem, unless there's something going on at home, God forbid what it is, emergency, or a disagreement, or something with a child, who knows? But my husband runs out the door all the time because that's what's seen him. And when you think of the cop in town, it's Rick. Yes, and just him. And I haven't lived here long, but I know how much he's put into this just from watching, just sidelines. I don't know the back drama. I don't know people's personal business. I stay pretty far out of it. But even I know, having only lived here a couple of years, what an impact he's had. And being a cop's wife, seeing this kind of thing, my husband will never come close to this job because I wouldn't let him. This kind of drama is not what you put towards your people who are doing all this work for you. You don't do that to them. So good luck getting someone as good as him, because most people will probably steer clear of this job now if this is what you do to them.
All right. Does anyone have anything different to say than what's already been said?
My name is Francis Connor. My wife, my family, and Rick's family are very good friends. Rick is a quality person. There's no way he should be treated like a bum. He's honest. He's done his job great. I wonder how many city councils he worked for before you came along. There didn't seem to be problems like this. I used to get a lot of scraps at school. One time, the superintendent set me down and says, "Francis, who do you think's the fault? You or all them guys you've been fighting with?" Keep talking. I think there's a few people here that could be talked to. I think if you used to take a survey of everybody that lives in this town and write down those who backed Rick and those who backed you people, you would get the hell kicked out of here. Amen. One other thing, it seems like all of your votes always seem to be together. I liked an old boy that saw this council years ago. His name was Bill Campbelling Sr. And when it come out in the paper, once in a while, there'd be a negative vote. That would be Bill. A lot of times, they ended up going Bill's way. He stood in his own two feet. He didn't need a clique or a clique or a group. He stood in his own. I respect that. And I can't stand people who can't look you in the eye when you're talking to them. My father always said, "Be careful of those people. They're crooked." I just don't know. I don't understand this at all. This is so rotten. I'm proud to say I live in Lisbon, but I'm very unproud of this situation here. I know I don't have wings on my back, but I look around, and I don't see it too many around here either. When you think you put somebody down, take a look in the mirror, you might find out whose fault it is.
Amen.
There's two words in the vocabulary that I like. Love is one, the other one is fate. And I wish for everyone to get their full share of fate, whether it's good or whether it's bad. Incidentally, in my lifetime, there's somebody that was a pain in my rear for years and years. She's finally getting hers. And I just, I used to make fate happen sometimes, and they'd come and get me. But I just don't understand this at all. And what really hurts, I look at people that I know here, and that's something I always hated, when there's two people that I really like and they don't get along. And there's quite a few people sitting here, a couple that's very close to me, and me close to them. Some of them can't look at me. They know how I feel about Rick. He's a good man. Please don't try to tear him down. I don't think you're being fair at all. See if you can go to sleep tonight.
All right. I think it's time we move on. Agenda item 9C, possible closed session pursuant...
I think they want to know your reasons.
They don't want to hear anymore.
These people should be allowed to hear their voice, guys.
Yeah. And then they want to know your reasons.
They work for us, the public.
Yeah.
And you need to hear our voice.
Does anyone have anything different to say than what was already said?
I thought one of your guys was one of your reasons.
Can't hear out there anyway.
Are we going to be heard later?
This is a personnel matter, and we cannot discuss the details of this.
No, it's a public meeting.
It is a public meeting, but this is a personnel matter, and we cannot discuss the details beyond this.
We're telling you a story.
We put you on the board.
Will you want to be on the board next time?
Does anybody have anything different to say than what's already been said?
Go on in and go up there and say what you want to say.
There's a whole bunch of people out there.
That's right. Don't make any difference. There might be something in there that's different than what's been said. You need to listen.
No, no, this is bullshit. It's downright bullshit.
Please step up.
I hired a park and rec, and that shouldn't have never been done either, the pack of park and rec. We don't need one this year with the COVID. Plus a full-time one in Lisbon, Iowa, paying $50,000 a year? How many people applied for that job? Three? I didn't even know it was up for bid or anything. I would have applied for it. He's getting 50 the wage plus the insurance.
Okay, now I'm going to talk, Nate.
Go ahead and talk. You guys are actually getting 30.
Talk, Stephanie. I'm actually going to talk, because I am about tired of all of this.
You're going to what?
I'm going to talk.
But your family.
I'm sorry, what?
Remember Ricky said, "What family nepotism here?" Isn't that what you said? That's exactly what you said. Now you should be able to step in, because you are on the board. You are not supposed to be talking as a mother. You are supposed to be talking as a board member.
And that's what I'm about to do, if you'll be quiet for two seconds.
Oh, let's go.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to tell you guys, first of all, anything that had to do with Drayton, as Sarah so pointed out, is my son. I have abstained from any of those votes. I have never voted on anything that ever had to do with anything with Drayton, because it is something that I knew to abstain from. So I have not. I do think it's very unfair that you guys are sitting here doing this to him, because he has nothing to do with it. I'm still talking. He has nothing to do with this. So I think it's very unfair that you guys are sitting here doing this to him, but it's whatever, and I don't care, and I'm pretty sure he probably doesn't either. Secondly, I would love to sit here, and I would love to tell you guys everything from point A to point Z, where we have gotten and why we're sitting where we are sitting at today. I've said it a gazillion times, every person sitting up here, our attorney, everybody can tell you, I want this all out in the open. I want this to be public knowledge. I want everyone to know. The problem is, Rick can go out, he can say anything that he wants, and he can tell anybody everything that he wants. We can't. We are not allowed to do that. As much as everybody sitting up here wants to do that, we cannot do it. If Rick wants to come in here, and he wants to tell everybody that it's okay for us to talk about it, then we will happily bring it all up, and we will talk about it. Every closed session that we've ever gone into to discuss things about Rick Scott to date has been per his request. The council didn't do that. The council didn't go into closed sessions. Rick requested that, and we had to do it per his request. So if Rick wants to come here, and he wants to say, "Let's talk about it. Let's get it all out in the open. Let's let everybody know what's going on," we will be happy to do that. So I don't know if he's out there. I don't know if somebody wants to call him and ask him if he wants to come down here and allow that to happen, but I would encourage it, and I would welcome it.
Let me say one thing. I'm Rick's sister. I never heard a word from him about what's going on. It was from other people that are friends on Facebook, and they were calling a friend and was wondering, they heard it from such and such. So no, it wasn't Rick.
Well, I don't, I'm just telling you, Sandra, this council can't talk about it. We're bound by laws that we can't talk about it. So I understand that you want to hear why we're doing this and what our...
Can we enable it, and then sometimes bring Rick in here, and let's all hear his side?
I mean, I would just call him and have him come.
Wasn't he invited tonight?
Of course he was. Yes, of course he was. I understand that, but you sitting out there...
How can we go from...
I understand that, but you sitting out there don't know everything that these five people sitting here know. So there is a big difference between what you know and what we know.
And it was supposed to be squashed. And then he was forced to resign or get fired. Okay, he resigned.
That's not true. That is not true.
Bullshit.
It's not true.
He was not forced to resign. He chose to resign.
I'm telling you, that is not true. That is not true.
He was on the hot seat. You were going to get rid of him.
That is not true.
Okay, so he's not resigning. Is he accepting the downward way?
You know, you say that, but I'm just telling you...
My wife's a teacher. You have to watch your hypers. You don't want to be coming in fired. You want to be able to go on forward and protect them hypers. You don't want to take it on to another place and say, "Oh, I was fired."
I understand that, Riley. I'm just telling you, you guys, you guys all think that you know what has happened, but you don't. You guys do not know what has happened.
Have you even looked at the human side of this?
Absolutely.
Have you?
Yeah, I look at Tyson, I look at Tyler, I look at Riley. Absolutely, 100%.
And you feel good about it?
No, I do not. Nobody sitting up here feels good about this. Not one person.
So you're going to get sued if he doesn't get fired, aren't you?
No.
Oh, Jesus.
Can I ask something? Did it first start with the dog not being federally certified?
No.
Because my problem here is... Let this man talk, he's up there on the mic. Well, I just want to get my thought on that. Because my problem is, where I work, I have a CDF, and I have somebody looking over me saying, "It is time for you to get renewed." And I think there should have probably been here somebody in this office to also be charged with, in charge of having that dog. Shouldn't he?
I don't disagree with you. We don't disagree with that, unfortunately. The person, the person, the person...
So who's in charge of that? Maybe she or he should be gone too, then.
What I'm going to say...
Did they recommend it or not?
And this is speaking for myself now. That was before my time. I came in on January. I'm not speaking for anybody else. What I'm saying is, there have been a lot of things that were going on, shouldn't have been going on, and until somebody actually starts looking into them, you don't know that it's happening. And by the time we started looking into those things, it was a snowball effect. We, and I'm sure this is what Todd's going to say here in just a minute, we started looking into this, we had a meeting on June 22nd. And in that meeting, Todd came with a bunch of questions and kind of wanted to know a timeline, so I'll just recap that timeline for everybody who's here tonight. How this all started was, we, it was, I'm sorry, my brain is just...
We retired Rico.
Oh, I'm sorry. How this all started was, we had all gotten a notification that Rick had been bitten by Rico. And so that was fine. Rick got bit by Rico, and we saw the report, and that was fine. Well, when that came out, it was also stated that, hey, maybe this isn't the only time that Rico had bit somebody. So then, we were all told that in February, Rick had also bitten another person, McKenna Nelson.
Rico had bit him.
Or Rico, I'm sorry. McKenna Nelson. And so when Todd came to the council on June 22nd, we were going through all of this, and we realized that that timeline wasn't accurate. McKenna had actually been bitten, and correct me if I'm wrong, December 9th of 2019. Is that correct?
That's what it said in the data request.
Okay. And so we were all told that it happened in February. So at that time, there was discussion of retiring Rico for multiple reasons. One, because Rico was at his five years, which is what we were told he would be working his five years as a canine dog. So he was at his five years. The other was, he had bitten McKenna, and then he'd also bitten his handler, which is a little severely. I mean, a nip or something here or there is really not anything to be concerned about, as I understand with a handler, but this required stitches. It was a pretty significant bite. So at that time, it was decided that Rico needed to be retired. So we retired Rico. When we retired Rico, I was not on the council when Rico was purchased, so I did not know. I thought that I was going to find a file on Rico. I thought I was going to find an employee file on Rico that would have all of the ins and outs of Rico, maybe a purchase agreement, maybe some type of an agreement that would say, "This is what you do with Rico when you retire him." Because in some places, if you look at it, it says you give Rico to the handler. Other places say you give Rico back to the breeder that you got him from, the person that actually gave you Rico. So the problem really is that the state of Iowa has no real good guidelines on canine dogs. Every individual department and unit kind of has their own guidelines, but there's not really anything that follows everything. So we were scrambling, trying to find all of the information on Rico. I couldn't find an employee file. There was no employee file, and I would point out that the police department employee files are kept by the police chief. So if I want a police officer's file right now, today, that's where I would go to get it. I wouldn't go to the city administrator. I would go to the chief of police to get that file. We didn't have one. So then, we asked for the certifications. It was brought to our attention by a citizen first that Rico may not be certified. So we went and we looked for the certifications. We couldn't find the certifications. We asked Rick for the certifications. He didn't have the certifications. We tried to contact the handler to first of all, find out, hey, do we give him back to you or can we give him to Rick for a dollar? What do we do with the dog? Is there any procedures, protocols? He's trained to be lethal. Is there anything that we need to do with this dog? When we talked to the handler, the very first conversation we had with him, he let us know that he did not think Rico was certified. But he wasn't in his office and he didn't have the paperwork, so he would get back to us. So he never got back to us. Mayor tried to call him and that mayor at that time was Doug O'Connor. Tried to call him, couldn't get a response. I tried to call him, couldn't get a response. I emailed him, couldn't get a response. I Facebook messaged him, couldn't get a response. Rick called him and was able to get a response from him. He would communicate with Rick and Rick and I had several meetings where I asked Rick to please have him email me anything, send it, because he didn't think he would get it in time for the meeting. Have him email it to me, have him do whatever he needs to do to get me this information because I can't help you unless you give me something to help you with. We never got any information. So we retired Rico. And then after we retired Rico, per Rick's own words, he was pissed off at us for retiring Rico. So he came back and said, you need to pay me for taking care of Rico for the last five years. He called me, I think he sent it to Doug O'Connor and maybe our attorney, and then he called me personally and said, hey, I just want to let you know that I submitted some paperwork. There's a law out there that says I need to be reimbursed for taking care of Rico. And so, so he needed to be reimbursed and he said it's a lot of money. And I said, okay, he goes, it's over $25,000.
Why didn't we reimburse?
What?
Through the years, why didn't we reimburse?
Well, again, because nobody knew anything about this canine dog from the jump. Nobody. There wasn't anybody, nobody.
That is his fault.
Nobody. The handler didn't know.
And the mayor.
The handler didn't know, the council didn't know, the mayor didn't know. Literally, nobody knew what was happening. So I'm still going. Again, Sarah and I weren't on this council. I don't know who was on the council when the dog was purchased.
$16,000 to go. We're not talking about a prattled dog.
Okay, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you the whole conversation. So we reimbursed Rick or we went to Rick-
Forgot to say that in the meantime, Rick was sick and in the hospital. You forgot to-
I don't know when Rick was sick. I found out since-
You don't know Rick's-
I'm not responsible for Rick. I am not responsible for Rick. He goes to the mayor. Anyway, I believe that Rick was sick from March to April of 2019. You guys want information, so I'll give you the information and then when I'm done, these guys can say if they have any discrepancies and then you guys can do whatever it is that you want to do. But you have to be quiet to let me get it out. As I understand Sandra, Rick was sick in March and April of 2019 and did miss some work in March and April of 2019. I don't know. Again, I wasn't in charge of him. The dog hasn't been certified since July of 2017. That certification actually happened in July of 2016 and was just good until July of 2017.
But he made trips to Kansas.
Yeah, I know of one for sure, but anyway.
I was not gonna interrupt you here, but we already, we already, we wish Travis the best, but this just happened Sunday and everybody knows about Travis and we even mentioned it tonight. Now, about months ago with Rick and now we're saying nobody knows.
Travis's wife messaged me personally and let me know about Travis. That's how I knew about Travis. Anyway, so Rick says he needs this money, whatever. We look into it and yes, Rick does. He's entitled to this money. There is a fair mark-
Labor Standards Act.
Fair Labor Standard Act and it states that Rick should get paid half an hour a day for taking care of the dog and it has a two-year limitation. So that's what we paid him. We paid him over $15,000 for taking care of a dog. Where the problem came in is we had a meeting with Rick to discuss that law and what needed to happen with it. And Rick said to us in that meeting, as we were kind of trying to figure out Rico's certifications and get all of that stuff, and Rick said to myself, Nost, Doug O'Connor, our city attorney, I haven't used the dog in two years because I knew he was not certified. And I said, Rick, what do you want me to do? How do you want me to tell the people in town that we're gonna pay you over $15,000 for taking care of a dog that you are now telling us that you could not use because you know he was not certified? And Rick said, I don't know, you know, whatever. And we said, well, that's a hard pill to swallow because not only are we paying you over $15,000 for taking care of the dog that you are telling us you have not used in two years because it was not certified, but we've also paid you 16 hours a month for training to train the dog that was not certified. So anyway, Rick said, I withdraw my request for the money. And we said, we can't do that because we know that it's a law and we need to pay you the money. We have to pay you the money now that we know that we have to pay you the money. So, fine, that was all said and done and over with. When we, when we looked into it, because again, there's nothing here telling us anything about this dog. When we look into all the rules and regulations, we find out initially that if the dog had been used in any kind of a federal case, so for an example, Rick is, got Rico out on the highway and he pulls over a car and the dog starts sniffing and he finds guns in the trunk of the car or something like that. And that becomes a federal case. That case would be not prosecutable because Rico is, can't get that. We've since found out that if Rico was ever used in any kind of an issue of a search warrant or anything like that, he wouldn't, it wouldn't be legal because Rico wasn't certified. So that's all of that stuff. So then it comes back and, I'm trying to keep the timeline here, guys, jump in anytime because you guys were all part of this, so some help would be appreciated. So then that happens, Rick gets the five-day suspension, not paid. He comes back to work after the five-day suspension. Pretty much everything is fine. We have a meeting with an employee and in that meeting, it's about something totally different. It's about a contract that needs to be negotiated. It has nothing to do with anything about any of this. And in that meeting, that employee is speaking with myself and John Bardley and wants to have a conversation with us since he has two council members. And in that meeting, he tells us that the morale on, for the city workers is the worst that it's ever been in two years. It's horrible. It's a terrible situation. Nobody likes coming to work. It's miserable. There's a lot of going back and forth. John, feel free to chime in. There's a lot of-
I'd like our lawyers to advise us, are we getting into trouble here talking too much about it and violating the possible state law?
It seems to me we're not talking about Rick, we're talking about the dog and now we're talking about city employees and we're just killing time.
I'm not killing time. I want to give you guys the background.
This man in the old shirt against the street.
What was the attorney saying? Something was not being said?
Stephanie, I would probably stay away from the information or from the employees. Just stay with the general, the general-
Yeah, because we're gonna run out of time pretty soon and then we're gonna say, okay, let's not-
Who's in charge of what? I'm sorry.
Who wrote the policy and procedures for this animal in the first place?
And who is in charge of policies and procedures for everything else?
So Rick is gonna take-
So Rick wrote the policy, Rick wrote the policies and procedures for the animal.
What about the rest?
For the employees or-
There's no policy and procedures for that particular item. How do we know there's policies and procedures for the rest of the city?
We have a policy and procedure handbook.
And who was in charge of keeping that handbook?
The council would review it.
Joe said, nobody ever got a review when Pearl was on the-
I would disagree with him, but yeah, I've done-
I want to see, let's show the reviews. That's personal, I mean I would think-
Because according to the way I look at the city, it's going to hell after it's-
Personnel-
The city is going bad.
Personnel, Doug-
Personnel reviews-
Ricky had not been given a review at least last year. He was just doing one of this-
He was given one last year.
He was given a review in 2019.
July of 2019, Connie gave him a review.
Was it favorable? Was there anything to be written up on it?
We can't discuss, we can't discuss the context of that.
That's a personnel matter unless Chief Scott-
This seal, this seal needs to speak. Let Sarah-
Okay, Todd Nelson. So what they want to tell you and tell the public is that this was not an issue that they can discuss, that there's too many things that they don't, can't share, it's behind the scenes. But what we do know that's on record is that it started out as bites and you know that for a fact because we have council members that stated that. Then we can tell you that my daughter was bitten and we never raised that issue to one person, not even the Chief Scott. And he will tell you that because it was a non-issue for us. Our daughter walked back in the door to their house. She dates his son, he's a great kid, by the way. We owe him for that. But she walked back in, started the dog, the dog bit her. She has more respect for the dog now, post-mortem, even then, because the dog recognized its training and recognized it was her and stopped. So it started out as dog bites and we have council members on record saying that. Then it morphed to certifications. We have at least two council members on record saying that. The night I was here, the next time, it was on record that all became about the money, the 15 grand. What I can tell you without any doubt in my mind is this started out as a witch hunt, which we've got a mayor sat up there that's no longer on the committee for whatever reason, that said this is not a witch hunt. Promised, he called me and promised to be providing all the information that I have requested publicly. And the city attorney then denied to provide me some information until later on because they didn't want to share it. And now we're standing here over something entirely different that they can't talk about again. So every time we can't talk about it, every time it morphs into something different. And so while we can't tell you what it is, we know exactly what it wasn't. Because it wasn't dog bites, because not McKenna, not myself and not my wife talked to anybody up here about it. Yet in April, we were hearing from members of you and the public that we were pissed off about the dog bite. So where did that come from? It came from somewhere right up here. Because it sure as hell was not us. And so the other thing that I know is that we can all vote every single day, not just in November. Don't vote just in November. Vote every single day with your interactions on a day-to-day basis and vote every single day with your dollars in how you represent their businesses and where you spend your money.
Amen. Amen.
How many people in the community have to come to these meetings and say, we want Rick as our chief? And, I mean, the whole damn community is behind him. At what point as a council, do you guys look at that and go, yeah, we realize you probably screwed up the certification with the dog. Everybody, you probably should have got a written reprimand. We understand that. But at what point do you start looking at the public and going, you represent us. We voted you guys up there to represent us. And at what point do you guys say, the whole community wants this guy as chief? Okay, we're gonna give him a written reprimand, slap his hand and you're still chief. You just lost a 25-year-old veteran to the, to police.
And fire. Well-
He's talking about Rod Crosser.
Rod, Rod is an asset to the police department that you'll never get back. I mean, you guys have no idea his qualifications. At what point are you guys gonna listen to us and the general public?
Yeah.
What do you, I mean, we have over a thousand people signing petitions.
Or maybe even go up to the police of Mount Vernon and see what he thinks of Chief Rick Scott.
Yes, Doug, I saw Doug.
He's not, he's not part of this. He's just here for representation.
No, we want, we want-
I will tell you one thing, if you guys are looking at the future of this police department, you're not bringing Ricky back. Definitely go talk to Mr. Shannon and joint departments.
We've already talked to Mr. Shannon.
Thank you.
That's so bad.
And we gotta look at the last line behind Lisbon High, what that says. Really, we really do. Because we're all proud of this town. What's it say? Today's town, tomorrow's future? I was proud of that.
How about we clean house?
Yeah.
I like it.
I think every one of you on this-
Got a high-paid city of business.
Well, how about this is my fair fare. He already resigned. Let's give him what he deserves. Let him resign in honor. Keep what he runs. Don't take away-
Why are you here?
That's not right.
Leave.
Hey, you need to knock it off or you can get out. We're not gonna sit here and trash-talk each other and be rude and disrespectful like that.
You guys may not know this, but I sat here and I defended Ricky on multiple occasions behind closed doors, many times.
Yay for you.
So, but my name is being bashed everywhere.
Well, wait, well, we're not, we're not talking about council. We're not talking about, we're talking about-
I'm not talking about it, but you guys don't know, there is another side, there are two sides to every story.
Look, I'm telling you, I think it's time for all of this to just be discussed out in the open. I am tired of hiding stuff. I'm tired of making us be the bad guys because we can't talk about it. I'm sick of it. I don't care. I don't want to be protected by laws and stuff anymore. I want everybody to know everything. Find a way to make that happen.
All right, we're gonna move on. Tracy, do you want to say something? I'll give you your three minutes, but you're the last one.
Okay. So obviously, I think this, you guys did not sign on to be on the city council for it to be like this and I think everyone knows it. I have three, I know three of you personally. Friendships have been lost, but people are passionate within this community because they perceive that an injustice is being intentionally done. I think the council, I think needs to recognize that it's not a parent-child relationship with the council and the community. It's more like the council representing the community. Because I feel like a parent would say, we're deciding this because it's for the best and you just have to do it. And the council, I think, does have an opportunity. Lisbon, excuse me, should be able to set the example of unity in current times. I've lived here for five years. I definitely haven't lived here as long as the rest of you, but we have loved it. We've loved it for five years. I think I've gone out with, I mean, it's a very welcoming community and Ricky Scott is part of that, right? Ricky's part of that.
Never told him that.
I don't want to live in a cancel culture of this community where the goal is to destroy people and their families. People talk about and post on Facebook and Twitter about being kind and building each other up. We're all in this together, but actions are speaking a lot louder than the words in the post. Rick has an exemplary record of over nearly two decades to this town and it entitles him grace for some minor traffic infractions that have been dug up. And I think that only recently have been brought up as being problematic. You know, most of us don't have a 15-year career and then three weeks of chaos and then we don't have a job no more. That's not right. I think it speaks volumes to the people willing to show up here and I can tell you, I also have not had a personal conversation with Rick. So I do not think Rick is around trying to rally people for him. People are just rallying because they want to. And I think that the council can ask, can search their hearts to try and turn course on this. It's not over. If I had to say the community, obviously, once Rick is the police chief, he connects with the community, knows who people are and where they live, so he can respond accordingly. I have a brother who's a police officer and I can tell you, Rick is the type of person that if I ever had a crisis in my house, I would want him to know, see Rick's live there, they got three kids, this is what's going on. And I don't want a police officer who's just gonna sit at the end of town writing tickets and sending in his car, not communicating with people. I don't want that. I think there's been innuendos about possible litigation, but I think that there's possible litigation both ways. I think if Rick would start a GoFundMe page, that would be crazy, right? So I guess my final request is, I think, when you guys go behind your closed doors, to really talk about can you change course? I would like to see Rick have his job offered back and move forward from the drama.
Yes.
I'm not sure if he'll take it. I do know it's his decision. But very least, if the honor, if he doesn't want it back, honor the agreement that was given to him last week. Because I do think there's still a chance to change course and I know that this is Because I do think there's still a chance to change course, and I know that this is not what council people signed on for, for this kind of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on. We moved 9C up to this point so we could take care of what you guys want us to deal with.
So, when's this gonna happen, sir?
Right now. We'll move up to 9C.
Motion to go into closed session.
Okay. Let me read it first, please. 9C, possible closed session pursuant to Code of Iowa Section 21.5, 1C, to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, I have a second. Roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna go into closed session. Agenda item 9D, discussion and possible action regarding termination of police chief, including rescission of terms of resignation.
I make a motion, the city rescind the termination agreement with Rick Scott made on July 6th of 2020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, I have a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Nay.
Nathan?
If I may ask, what did you just do?
We just rescinded the agreement that we agreed upon last, well, whatever that date was, Monday night with Rick Scott.
How could you legally do that? It was a signed deal. You had your attorney here for almost five hours. How can you legally do that now?
It wasn't signed.
It was not a signed deal. It was not finalized.
But you all agreed to it.
Do you want to go on?
I make a motion to agree to the new terms requested through Rick Scott's attorney, that he be allowed to resign, be paid health insurance through September 2020. In addition, get paid his 206.5 vacation, 4.05 comp time, 12.5 personal leave. Both Rick Scott and the city will enter a mutual non-disparagement and mutual settlement agreement and release of any and all claims that either party may have.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second.
A motion from the audience at this point?
No, the time for public input has passed.
You didn't move the meeting. Nobody could, there was 40 or 50 people that couldn't get in here and have a chance to speak.
The time for public input has passed. Please be quiet.
And speaking of that, you knew there would be a crowd. I noticed you're all social-distanced here. You knew there would be a crowd, and you made no effort to allow us that same ability. You could have moved the fire trucks out and given us a chance to be here tonight--
Point of order. Please be quiet.
--without being, elbow to elbow. You put our lives at risk.
Point of order. No, you put yourself--
You put our lives at risk when you refused to move--
You came in here by choice. Point of order. Please be quiet. I will have you removed.
You put our lives at risk. If anybody here ends up sick, I want you to know you're responsible for that.
Chief Shannon, please remove her. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye. Can I have a minute to explain my votes?
Yes.
I voted nay to rescind the offer from Monday night because I think Rick Scott deserved that. I voted yes for the new because I didn't want him to go home empty-handed. I'm just like everybody else in here. I have the same views as you do. I feel the same thing. I'm upset. I don't like it. Being called names, everything else. It's not what I'm here for. I'm here to make the city better. I'm one guy. I can make my case as much as I can, and that's all I can do. So, if you guys want to be mad at me, be mad at me. And come November, better see a lot of names on that ballot.
How many people up for election over there?
Three, I think.
I don't know if anybody's up this November.
No next November?
Be next November.
It's unfortunate. It's gonna be a long year.
Are those items being offered to Rick, or is he gonna find out about that now?
This was his, this is what he presented to us.
And his attorney.
Oh, yeah. This is him and his attorney.
So, you're gonna honor or not change it next week?
Well, I don't know. It depends if he comes back with a new offer next week.
In interim right now, what's going on, I'd like to know.
We have a 28E agreement with Mount Vernon. Mount Vernon has agreed to cover our shifts. We still have two officers, one of which is on patrol five days a week. And the future of the police department is to be discussed.
What's that cost?
I don't know how to answer that.
And I think possibly it should be noted that going forward at a future meeting, it will likely be discussed. You have the police department-- I'm sorry, what?
Your vote, I need your vote.
Were you saying something?
Julie asked me a question.
Oh, okay. Anyway, there's discussion, there will be discussion about having the police department report to the new city administrator, and this is obviously not the way that anybody would want to introduce this, but Jeff Horn is our interim city administrator. And we, we have a part-time mayor and a part-time council. And I don't think it's been good practice for many years, obviously, for the police department to report to a part-time mayor. So, at one of the next council meetings very shortly, there'll be discussion about having the police department, just like every other department in the city, report straight up to the interim administrator. Every other department does that, but the police department was the only one that did not and was ran as its own entity. So, there'll be discussion about changing that as well.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a quick comment about your new city administrator. I came down here this morning at 8:00 and suggested, since I have a little experience in all of this, that this would be an overflow meeting, and that we should get the fire department prepared, and that I was concerned about social distancing. Didn't seem to think I knew what I was talking about.
I asked before the meeting started as well.
I mean, it's ridiculous to be crammed in here during a pandemic. I mean, you guys should have realized it anyway. You knew it was gonna be a big deal.
I have to tell you, I did not see any Facebook things, nor, the first thing I saw this morning was somebody sent me a picture of a sign-out on Highway 30. And yes, I did think that there would be some people here tonight, Tucker, but last time we did this, there was about, does anybody know what that number was? 15, 20, 25, maybe?
25-ish.
Because we thought it was all said and done, and now those before you fired another issue.
That was what?
Before you fired a police chief.
Well, we did not fire him. He resigned, but--
Well, you were gonna fire him.
All right. Thank you for--
I wouldn't want to work for a council like you.
Thank you, everyone, for your input.
My question, I guess, is, are we going for, how is this an issue again? Or can we input and maybe have distance? This is the second time I've been down here for the same things, who's been crammed in a room.
I think you're 100% right, and we need to respect social distancing, so this is the last time that this is gonna happen.
I would certainly hope so.
We will ensure, we will ensure that we schedule a Zoom meeting capability, and we're gonna limit the access to this room to an appropriate number--
Nice thing is now, all of East Miami, it sees how Lisbon-- It's dysfunctional.
All right. We're moving on.
What do you have to say for that?
We are moving on.
I would hope so. We thought that a week ago.
Section 5, Agenda Item 5A, discussion and possible action regarding city administrators' employment separation agreement and mutual settlement agreement and release.
Do you have anything on this, Jeff?
Do you have any content on this? I don't have anything. Mark, can you--
Yeah, we've worked out a mutual settlement, separation agreement, mutual settlement and release with Connie and her attorney. It's in the packet tonight through review, through consideration and approval if you wish.
All righty. I will make a motion to accept the packet, the agreement as illustrated in the packet.
I ask what the package is?
This is not a time for, there's no public input for this. This is just city action.
The last meeting, everybody got to talk, especially a certain individual.
This is public--
Call for a motion.
He hasn't--
I have a motion on floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Isn't this our money that we're, that you guys are spending? Don't we have, don't we have the right--
Sir, please be quiet.
Have a good night, Nate.
See you, Joe.
You guys are despicable. I detest every one of you guys. I cannot believe how you guys are running this. This is horrible. The guy came in here and says, "You guys need new city administrator." I'm here, I'm here to help you with it. Your guys, the town is a joke. That's more or less what he stood at that microphone right there and said, did he not? Go ahead, Mark. Tell them to move on.
Joe, come on.
You're a bunch of idiots, all of you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
5B, discussion and possible action--
That got moved.
Uh, we did move that to 9D. All right. 5C, discussion and possible approval of placing the old dump truck and old city truck up for sale by sealed bids.
Motion to approve placing them for sale.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
5D, discussion and possible action of goal-setting 2021 to 2025.
We talked about this before at the other meetings and thought about having Pat Callahan do that. Is that still what the council would want? Pat still to do that?
That's what I would want to do.
I, I think Pat would be a great candidate for that, to help us out with that.
August be a good time to do that?
Do we want to do that during a normal council session?
I think that's what we discussed.
Usually, it's a longer couple, two to three hours, I would guess.
So, like, you do the first one that way, and then the rest of them, as we're just discussing each individual item or something, could be at the end of a council meeting, so we're not--
Yeah, I mean, you break it up. I mean, you set them at one meeting, and then we break them up and work through things in the future meeting, regular meeting.
Regular meeting, so we're not having extra special meetings. That's fine.
Right. Just one special meeting, though, to do the main part of it. It's only something you do once every five years.
Yeah, gotcha.
All right, do we want to set, pick a date for, for this during the normal August 10th?
You probably need to see when Pat Callahan's available.
Yeah. Let's go for the second meeting so we can reach out to him and see if he's available, and then if he's not, we could, that would give us time to reschedule.
Sounds good.
The second, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The August 24th meeting--
Let's just table this for tonight, and then we'll reach out to Pat and see if he's available for the second meeting in August, and then we'll put it on the 27th agenda to approve the meeting that night, for the second meeting in August.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Agenda Item 5E, discussion and possible action of allowing Mackamill Pond to be a catch-and-release pond.
Well, as some of you may know, and maybe not all of you do, we purchased the Mackamill land, and it has a pond on it, and we need to put an ordinance in place to make that pond catch-and-release. So, that's what this item on the agenda is. So, I'll make a motion to proceed with making the Mackamill Pond a catch-and-release pond only.
I'll second that. All right, roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff's gonna need to draft an ordinance for that, and you guys will have to hold a public hearing, too, to bring that ordinance--
Very good.
Is that considered public fishing ground? Would you have to fish by, with the fish?
There hasn't been any discussion of stocking it or anything. I mean, it's stocked a little bit right now, but with catch-and-release--
It's minimally stocked.
The concern was that it was gonna get fished out.
Yeah, that's why we're doing the catch-and-release, to kind of keep it.
Yeah. And he used to allow kids to fish there when it was private property, and that was always his rule with them, was just make it catch-and-release.
Yep.
All right. 5F, discussion and possible action regarding K-9 bite suit. Now, I'd ask this to be put on the agenda because Rick Scott had, I believe, may have offered to Mount Vernon to acquire the bite suit. Did he reach out to you with anything?
He did offer that.
What were the, you recall the terms?
There was no conditions. It was coming back to you guys at some point.
Just a donation to, to Mount Vernon?
It should be a donation because as, before, Mount Vernon had their K-9 unit, they would use ours. And now that we don't have a K-9 unit, there will be times that we will need to use theirs. So, it should be a donation.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we donate the K-9 bite suit to Mount Vernon K-9 unit police force.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Nathan? 5G, discussion and possible action regarding agreement for well-site evaluation with Beanstra and Kim.
Yeah, this is the agreement, so I'm gonna start citing the Beanstra and Kim, for Dave to start citing the well up in the acquired property that the city got near the pond we're just talking about. It'll be somewhere in that vicinity and get that going. I talked to the state, or to the bond council today a little bit. They called B, and I talked to them a little bit about timetable for that, and we'll be going. So, it'll probably be some time they cite it, probably ID that we'd be doing it sometime, summer '21. Just gets the ball rolling.
All right. Do we need to make a motion for this thing? Okay. I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with Beanstra and Kim for that well-site evaluation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Travis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
5H, discussion and possible action for downtown reinvestment grant application from Travis Allen.
Travis is here.
Travis is here. I just want to walk in a second.
Do you have anything you want to add, Travis, to what we have in our packet?
What I want to note, too, is if anybody have any ideas on either chicken ceiling or finishing the alleys after the drainage, and it's all super project that we got done, was that last year?
Last year.
Now, now that the ground's settled, everything, you're talking about big chicken ceiling in that alley, trying to help keep the soot from falling up down. Because we've had troubles with those drains getting clogged. I'm just trying to, probably, so I finish up siding the rest of my place. Got plans with Mark, maybe eventually doing some art shows and things out back and stuff. So, I'm hoping that we'll get it through and help me finish up my building and keep moving forward. I did something going down the avenue, so--
Connie, maybe you remember, but weren't they gonna use some leftover something or another from somewhere?
We didn't have any plans to pave that alley. Unfortunately, we didn't budget anything for the next year. Our road use funds that we are receiving now are about half as what we normally receive due to the COVID virus and the fact that most of our road use money comes from gas tax, and people aren't traveling and spending that, so I don't see that happening in the, in the near future. I mean, it's obviously up to you guys, but we did not budget anything for this year to do that.
Well, I'll move to approve the application.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Travis, if you wanted that to be on an agenda item for discussion for council to have that paved, you would just need to call City Hall and request for it to be put on the agenda.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. 5I, discussion of sauerkraut days 2020.
I'm just curious about, you know, you guys wanted to speak with Chief Sings and Lynn County Public Health, and I didn't know if you guys made a determination, but I hope you received some information from us.
Brandon, did you communicate with them?
Yeah, the last, I was talking with Jerry Deech, the last I knew, they were talking about a parade in the evening on one of the nights, ending at the park, fireworks. And I liked that idea the best of all. As of right now, we're looking at doing just a one-day event, either Friday or Saturday, depending on when we get the fireworks back now. But we're just looking at doing an extended parade, instead of our normal parade route, maybe going out by the care center or no lock, and just to keep things apart more or if we get more, more floats or anything.
And no downtown events of any kind, just, just the parade and the fireworks?
Correct. We'll do the five day Saturday more, regardless of what they do, because we're having people sign up, and that's a virtual event as well. So, there will probably be a few physical parties.
It's gonna be a longer parade, and then here-- Any longer parade is probably gonna be an elongated route.
It's an elongated route in anticipation of possibly having more floats or more people parked there, if nothing else, at least to get distance between people, expecting.
Very good.
And then be in the evening, by setting a block or raid, and then to have it ended at the park.
Brandon, you mentioned that you like this idea the best out of all of them. Is that to say, I mean, we're looking for your professional opinion here?
I think, I think that's doable.
Okay.
I think, you know, there's some discussion about, some of the city wanting to maybe go over to Myers Meadow and that new place, but I think at the park, everybody knows that they can see the fireworks from their house, so people may gather at their own property and see the fireworks, and if you do it somewhere different, people may not know if they can see the fireworks, so they're gonna go there. There's no good access in and out of there yet. I mean, you're in a field, and I think--
Is there a fire risk, too, with the grasses in the fields?
It doesn't matter. That's a non-issue because we can't use it till September, so we don't even--
I think it's right now, until you get a park in there, it's really not a good, good option. So, I'm good with, with this plan here. I think by far, it definitely made me feel better, and I talked to the insurance agent for the city, and he felt better about that.
So, you guys will come back to us at some point with a list of the streets that you need to close down?
For the parade. And that's, I guess, normally, if you're out, I think it's what about now that we would have to address for any city help with anything or doing any of that. I'm wondering when you need to know what the next council meeting is.
It's August 8th.
Well--
Correct.
No, July 27th.
27th.
I mean--
You need to know then.
We need to know on the next council meeting.
We would need to know till I 27th.
Do you have, I'm curious if you have any limitations as to what we can't close off?
Well, again, fire department, police.
I mean, can we cross Business 30 now that it's not Highway 30?
I don't know why you couldn't. They do, they do motorcycle things all the time that they close off. And that was before it was--
We don't officially own that yet, but, you know, because we haven't, we haven't finalized that agreement, but--
But does it mean there are much traffic?
No, and you could definitely, we could arrange for somebody to be there to--
Oh, absolutely.
Control it.
Even if it's a compromise.
Correct.
Foster fire.
My only concern is that there's still social distancing in Lynn County. Let me make sure we do that at the fire. Like you say, the park, the all-in pass, it's just a, you know, mob, maybe just have, maybe the members just--
It's no different than the city council meeting.
Yeah, people were pretty upset about that, so, so maybe sauerkraut days wouldn't be. What's that? I think too, keep in mind, keep in mind that, you know, this is fluid because I know just a couple of weeks ago, we got a notice from Lynn County saying that, hey, we might go back to only 10 groups of 10 people. They haven't done it, but as the cases are going up, I mean, this is definitely something that could.
And that's something that we consider as well. That's why we're not.
Yeah.
We want your resources and effort to be doing anything more than that.
It's definitely something that could change.
One thing about the route, I will say, traditionally, the sauerkraut days, you left one due to the farmer market road, Jackson Street's always been in that route. If the parade comes down Washington and into the park on Jackson, you'd have both of those routes closed, so we'd have to figure out what to do with semis that would come into town from North Washington. That's just one thing to keep in mind about closing both Washington and Jackson.
Well, be here on the 27th, would you?
Yeah, if your concerns are addressed before your proposal, I'm sure we'll be. Before, before.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 6A, resolution awarding sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2020, and authorizing redemption of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2011B.
We're going to have to wait a minute for, to get Maggie on the phone.
To get her on the phone, okay.
I just texted her and told her we're ready for her.
Okay.
We have very good, though, interest rates.
Yes.
I know, that's wonderful.
Oh, I saw that. That's awesome.
Even less than what we thought.
Yeah.
So now we'll save even more money.
Well, yeah, it's a good deal.
The number I have for her is not her cell number, it's her.
It's office.
Yeah. The number I have is that one.
Yeah, I don't think I got any of them. I may improve it without having it hard to her.
We can probably move on to another one if you want to while she's, while we're waiting for her call.
All righty, we will come back to item 6A after we get the phone secured. Item 6B, resolution 34-2020, approving transfer of funds.
These are the transfers that we do each year. Oh, here she is. Hello?
Let's finish this one though.
Hey, I'm going to put you on speakerphone. Hold on.
We're going to finish 9B though, okay? So can she just hang on for a second while we do that?
Okay, we're just going to finish the item that we're on, and then we'll get right to you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the transfer of funds.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Let's use four. It's like capital improvement funds, all that.
Capital improvement and the lost, the money we use lost for.
Okay.
Do this at the beginning of the year.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We have a motion from Stephanie, a second from John. Roll call, Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan? Aye. All right, we're going to go back to 6A, resolution awarding sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2020, and authorizing redemption of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2011B. On the phone we have?
Maggie Spears. Can you hear us, Maggie?
Yes.
Oh, Maggie Berger, I'm sorry. It was Spear Financial.
What does it, it's okay. This is Maggie Berger with Spear Financial.
Hi, Maggie.
I would, we have sent out a letter to you folks tonight, and this morning we received bids on $5,250,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2020. I remind you, that includes new money projects as well as some refunding dollars. We are recommending that you would award to UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, at an interest rate of 1.2379%. It also should be noted that UMB Bank is going to pay the city a very small premium of $6,460, and really why a premium comes about is they need to pay you upfront for what they assume are higher interest rates that the market wants to feed. We also did refund the Series 2011B bonds as part of this issuance, and we are going to have you realize a gross savings of $161,836.53% or a net present value savings of about $152,000, $152,000, and that is a total savings of 13.016% to the refunded bond. That's just a phenomenal savings rate. We only really recommend when we do a refunding that we're doing it to be able to produce approximately 2.2% savings. This was also a new rating for the issuer for the city of Lisbon. You have not been rated in the past, but this year, just based mainly on the size, we did have you go through the public rating process with Rudy's investor service, and Lisbon was rated an A3. It included that in your packet. Should be noted that AAA is the highest rating that is attainable, and we've got the AA category, which is the AA1, AA2, and AA3, and the single A category of A1, A2, and A3. And although the city falls at the lower side of the A3 category, we do note that it did bring a couple of extra figures to the table that we likely would not have seen. We also feel that these interest rates were in line with where some of our single A rated category interest rates were last week, and knowing that also last week, we saw some unrated bonds, which were in the 1.4% rate. So that's a pretty significant savings of about 20 basis points from the unrated to rated. But one thing I will tell you about the rating is Rudy's always likes cash, so they like that you have a decent cash fund to balance in the general fund of approximately 23.4%. They also like that bonds are paid fast, and although this is a 15-year bond issue, you have 71% of your outstanding principal being repaid in 10 years. It also should be noted that you have a scorecard indicated rating of an A2, which is one notch higher. Now, that scorecard is just putting all of your numbers into their matrix. They do then go to a committee who assigns the rating. I can tell you that it is very incumbent that you get the scorecard indicated rating on your very personal rating. Usually, they're going to rate you one notch lower and then monitor what things look like for the city over the next few years before they would discuss if there would be possibly a rate upgrade, but that's always something that is up for discussion in the next few years. You will not need to ask for a rating until you have another bond issue and you think that bond issue is of a size that would require you having a rating. In the interim though, they may reach out and watch you with post-surveillance at no cost to you, or no review financials, and they have a quick call with your administration, and that's really just a confirm and get a hearing key that people are still in the same conditions for the city, or maybe things are good. You just do a little checking out from time to time. We did have UMB Bank winning this bid, but coming in second was Banker Bank at 1.3785%. Should be noted that they did have Bridge Community Bank living with them. We always do like to see local bank participation, even if they do not participate in the winning bid. The city of Lisbon's final debt service schedule is also included in the package, and these bonds become callable after June 1st of 2027, so that means you can call them in the holder part if the interest rates are lower than 1% down to 1.65%, but I don't know if they will be. I highly doubt it, but if they are, you would have the opportunity to refund you up to a savings, but also at that time, you could pay the bonds off in full interest part. You also could just keep these interest rates if you're getting more on the needs and reinvestment. You may want to keep your dollars invested and just pay the bonds as you go. And finally, you are replacing old debt in 2011B. Those interest rates range from a 2.6 down to 4% that made that section mature in 2030. We kept with the same maturity for the refunding bond, so the portion of your debt that is attributable to refunding still will mature in 2030, and now those interest rates range from a 1% down to a 1.2%, which is what produced that $161,000 savings amount. With that, I would answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend that you would award this thing to UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, at an interest rate of 1.2379%.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Maggie before I hang up?
No, but I wish everybody would have been here for that.
I'm super happy $161,000, $162,000.
Thank you very much, Maggie.
Wow.
Thank you guys very much. You have a very good evening, and let me know if there's any other questions, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All righty, so we need a motion to award the sale, or to award this sale of bonds to UMB Bank.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Stephanie, a second by Sarah. Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Nathan? Aye. And thank you, Connie, for all your work on that as well.
Yes, thank you.
Very nice. All right, we've already done B. So 6C, resolution 35-2020, setting salaries for city employees for fiscal year '21.
The resolution that you have in front of you, the rates that are on there are the rates, current hourly rates that they're making now. The library board did approve a 3% increase for the library members, which are on the bottom, so what you would be doing is looking at the first two.
You mean, because they've already approved it through their board?
Yes.
Yeah. Every year in July, we do this, and this will be retro back to July 1st because we're a little behind the eight ball this year. So I'll make a motion to approve setting the salary for the city employees. It is a 3% raise for this year.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second.
What, John looks like he has a question.
Okay.
In the stock we got, I thought it was 2.5, is that right?
The resolution said three.
No, the resolution just, it has the current rates, and then it had three, yeah. I just put it at three, but you guys can make it whatever you want to make it.
Yeah, I'm motioning to approve it.
You're motioning for the three.
For the resolution.
The union contract is probably what you're thinking about, John.
The union contract is 2.5.
A minimum of 2.5 is the union contract.
Yeah, okay. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Travis?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan? Aye.
I would just like to point out too, for the cameras and anybody else who's still sitting here, I voted on that resolution because Drayton is not on there, so I didn't abstain. He is not one of the employees getting the raise.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. All right, resolution 6D, resolution 36-2020, approving union contract.
This is a draft that, a first draft that we've come up with. It would still need to go back to Travis and the union representative. As you can see, everything that Travis would like to change in the agreement is in yellow, so that I wanted you guys to be able to find. Everything else is the same except for what's in yellow.
John and I met with Travis to do this negotiation, and one of the things that you'll see is in there, it was in there before, and at some point, it's gotten taken out, and as a city, we've just always honored it because we knew it should be in there, but it needs to be in there, and it never should have been just honored without being in the contract, and that is that if an employee gets a certification of some type, they get a 50-cent raise or, you know, they get a raise for getting, for bettering themselves in their position. So that's in there. The police department asked to have in there, they are not at scale with other departments in our area, so that is in there to offer at least the ability to get our officers up to scale with where they should be compared to other departments in our area, like size, like, you know, similar departments in our area. And I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it might be on there. I believe it's 2557 would be the max, and so what they're asking is that over the next three years or so, we would scale them so that eventually they get, you know, Jeff has 30 years, Amy has 15 years experience. Now, obviously, we probably won't move on that anytime soon because we may be joining with Mount Vernon, and this may be a non-issue, but they requested it be put in the union contract because they're not at scale. So that's what that part of it is. The other part, Travis is requesting us to put a position in there. It would be like his assistant. It would be like, I don't, it's not the term for it, but it would be like the second-in-command to Travis, and the reason that he's asking for that is sometimes Travis is gone, obviously, and when Travis is gone, there really is nobody in charge. It's, there's nobody, you know, like, we don't, we don't have somebody set to be in charge when Travis is gone.
He doesn't normally assign anybody, or does he default to the city administrator?
It doesn't really, I mean, I don't know if you guys normally would assign somebody. I mean, it never has happened in the past. It's.
He just usually splits the duties with the guys before he goes, gives the administrator a copy, and then we kind of oversee when he's gone.
And obviously, in the situation that we're in today, there's no way that he could have given anybody notice or.
No, he couldn't have anticipated.
You know, he didn't know this was going to happen. So this is the kind of stuff that he's trying to prevent. So that is in there.
That actually is not in there.
You didn't put it in?
Basically, because of with everything that's going on, that position, we didn't, he wanted to create a position, but we didn't budget or anything for the position this fiscal year, so it would be something that we could create, the position, and put it in the contract, but as far as hiring someone for that position, it would probably be next fiscal year due to all the, everything that's going on this year.
Right, but this is a three-year contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to have that in this contract in order to even be able to do it next year.
Yeah.
So that will have to be added.
Okay. We're not ready to hire another staff in the works.
No, and we wouldn't be hiring a newer employee.
We would just be redefining someone that's already there.
Yeah, already there.
Okay.
Who meets basically those requirements right now, probably.
Right.
But that does need to be in there because even if it doesn't happen in this fiscal budget, it would likely happen in the next one, and this is a three-year contract that we're negotiating for the union.
Okay.
John, anything else?
The other thing you put in there too, just you guys can make sure you took a look at, he wanted to change the vacation times. Right now, after one year, you get five days. After two years through nine years, you get 10 days. 10 years through 19 years, you get 15 days. 20 to 24 years, you get 20 days, and then after 25 years, you get 25 days. He wanted to change that from, after one year, you get five days, to after one year, two, five years of service, you get two, 10 days instead of, 10 days instead of five. So that would be changing, you would get 10 days through years, one through five, where right now, you have to work actually to two years, so it would be a year difference.
Also, I think too, just remembered it, for the police department, they right now, the way the police department works is they work 10 and 1/2 hour days, and that creates their work week.
When they take a holiday.
When they take a holiday, they only get paid for eight and 1/2 hours or eight hours. So they would like to request it that instead of it being a holiday, it's a day's work, because otherwise, what they're having to do is find somewhere else to make up those extra two hours throughout the week, because they have to add it on to their normal, their normal 10 and 1/2 hour shift, because we pay them for an eight-hour holiday instead of a 10 and 1/2 hour workday, which is what their normal workday would be. Again, this is all just, you know, a wish list right now at this point. It'll go back to them, they'll see if, you know, they like it.
Well, this is, like I said, this is, you guys would have to approve this first to send back to them.
Yep.
And we did file for an extension, but like I said, the longer we take, the longer we have to go back to July 1st for payroll, but Christina can figure that out.
So we're still at the draft stage?
Well, we shouldn't have any payroll changes.
Well, the.
We just did those.
Oh.
That contract shouldn't have anything to do with payroll.
No, it shouldn't, so we have, like I said, we filed an extension on it.
But are we working on, are we changing the terms of this thing? We're still in draft mode?
We're still in draft mode, yeah. This is the draft that's coming to you guys from Travis and the union rep.
Should we act on this at this point, or?
If you're ready to, you can.
I think giving more vacation makes it good to, I think twice about jumping ship I think giving more vacation makes a good employee think twice about jumping ship for a few dollars or a few cents even more than a few days. I think it's important to hang on to people.
Absolutely. All right, do we have a motion to approve the draft of the union contract?
I'll approve.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Travis?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, item 7, correspondence. Anything?
We got to do the interim administrator's contract.
Yeah, you skipped E, 6E.
Be darned, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Item 6E, Resolution 37-2020, approving interim administrator contract.
Even though you guys have already done this, it needs to be done by resolution. So this is just a...
I make a motion to approve.
I will second. Make a motion and a second. Stephanie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Okay. Item 7, correspondence.
We don't have any.
Okay. Item 8A, city engineer's report.
Over here.
Okay.
Let's come back to it.
Poor Dave.
Let's come back to it.
We can come back to that. Let's go on to 8B, public works directors' report. Do you have anything from public works?
Travis, do you have anything? No.
I will say that they are cleaning up storm debris. That's what they did today from the storm that happened over the weekend. So they're out there trying to clean that up. Nate, let me know that they do have a little bit more to do tomorrow. So they're going to try to finish that up tomorrow, but the guys are, you know, business as usual while Travis is out, so.
Putting in some, they're going to be doing some sidewalk or in the new area subdivision. That's something to be, they'll be doing. And I don't know if they got to start on that day or not. I didn't see much of that.
He didn't say anything about that. I don't think they did.
That's one of the things I knew they had coming up here. Water, wastewater stuff.
All right, our engineer will move on to 8C, police chief's report.
Amy said everything, I believe she said every...
She submitted it.
Exactly right. I was just going to say, I asked the team to continue, to return to doing the high-level summary of our...
And I asked her to, I asked her in the report the next time, just to differentiate what Lisbon is doing and what Mount Vernon does.
Right.
Just so we can get an idea of, you know, how many Mount Vernon's doing, how many Lisbon's doing, and like we had discussed, and I think we discussed that in one of our meetings.
Yes, that's a good suggestion. Mount Vernon provides us a very good report so that we can keep...
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, if she could just relay that report to us, then that's awesome.
Absolutely. But, yeah, if you've got any questions on that, we can address that later time. All right, try them?
No.
Okay.
He might have left.
He was here though.
He was here.
Hey, for effort.
All right.
Maybe he didn't have anything to report.
Okay, well, we'll go on that, I guess.
He was probably just here to talk to you about the well site agreement.
Okay, which we...
Already did.
Already did.
All right. 8D, fire chiefs' report.
Nothing.
Nothing?
I'll see if there's a question.
I don't think so. Any questions, anyone? Okay. 8E, city administrators' report.
Well, tried to get around and meet people as social, you know, as conditions allow these days. So I knew Chris Nosbich before I came here, but I went over and had a conversation with him as well. I met Joe at the convention, at the development group.
Hey, Chris Nosbich, just for the people who don't know, is...
Mount Vernon's the event director.
And Joe is?
Joe Jensen.
Joe Jensen.
Joe Jensen.
I know, I just want him to tell it real.
The development, the Mount Vernon Lisbon Development Group, and got to meet with him a little bit, and then other people have come in and introduced themselves. And I know right now it's kind of an unusual time, so otherwise I try to get out and see more people. Got to meet the library. I did go over and get a tour of the library and some of that, and met with Southeast Lynn and met their director. And trying to keep doing some of that, and also in here just learning more. Connie's been very helpful to me in learning the books and getting the other things down. I'm just trying to, I learn a few things each day. It seems like that, you know, just the way that things are done here differently than maybe the little places I've been in the past, and try to pick up the little differences and things like that, so.
All right.
Travis did take him on a tour of the town. Didn't take very long, but...
Yeah.
Tour of the sewer plant and some other things.
I know I've had a couple calls about some of the agendas, and just so everybody knows, the reason the agendas look differently is, you know, in prior Connie did the agendas, Jeff's doing the agendas. Now Jeff lists whatever's in the code that he's, Connie would always just kind of list the code and go with it. Jeff gives the detail of what's in the code. So if the agendas look different than what you're used to, it's not because we're changing anything or doing anything differently, it's because he's listing the actual code. He's listing the definition from the actual code. So that's the difference in the agendas.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Mayor's report. This is my first mayor's report, I suppose. I spent last week, I had taken vacation from work so that I could just mainly recharge, but it ended up being a lot of time here at City Hall, working with Jeff, working with Stephanie. And I also met with Chris Nosbich and Doug Shannon to discuss matters with regard to the police force. It is a, that is also a fluid situation, and this council will have to address it in very short order very soon. As for that, I really don't have anything else to report tonight, so. All right, 8G, council reports. Sarah?
First of all, my thoughts and prayers are with Travis. Hopefully he makes a full recovery. Thank you to the public works guys for doing storm cleanup. We're fortunate compared to some of the other surrounding towns around us. I mean, Springfield got hit badly, but I, and I wish there was more citizens here at this point because this is how it usually goes. They don't stick around for everything, and so they only get a half of what we actually do up here. But thank you for everyone who has come out. I will tell you right now, I don't know if anybody saw, me get very emotional up here, this is not what we like to do. So if you guys think, for whoever's left, think that we are just out to do whatever, me personally, I've got a heart. I have a family, just like everyone else does. So if you guys want to think what you do, think about, you can think that. You can't control what you think. But just know there's two sides to every story, and before you start judging, get both sides. That's all I'm going to ask. That's all.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I would say the same about Travis and the city workers, and I really want to thank the other three guys because they are really stepping up to, you know, make sure that everything still runs smoothly while Travis is gone. Obviously, you all know, because we discussed it earlier, that we are definitely looking at, and this council will be discussing in the very near future, the possibility of joining with Mount Vernon. At this time, we have met with Doug and the city administrator, and I will not attempt to say his last name because I don't ever say it right, but Chris. And we are asking Mount Vernon to add coverage to what they already do for us. We have an agreement with them. It's for 10 hours a week, and we're asking them to add some coverage to that. I would encourage you as residents, when you see them, get out there, meet them, talk to them. It is very possible in the very near future that that could be your police department. And so it would be nice if you could get out there and you could, you know, interact with them and make sure that you know what they're all about and how they operate, would not just assume, you know, as years pass, things have changed since the olden days, and I know everybody has kind of a perception, but you could be wrong. Kind of to play off of what Sarah said, this has not been easy, and what I would encourage all of you to do is, yes, there are two sides to every story. However, in this situation, there's only one side that can talk about anything that's happening. So what I would encourage you to do is if you have questions, or if you left here tonight with questions, I would encourage you to contact Rick, and I would encourage you to ask him what's going on and to find the facts. Because a lot of what was said here tonight was not a fact, and we could have sat up here and argued with people for hours upon hours upon hours, and it would have done no good because we're not going to change anybody's mind, and that's perfectly fine. But he is the only one who can set the record straight, and so I would encourage anybody who wants to know what's going on to go to him and ask him to do that. That's it.
Thank you. As councilman, I would agree with everything that these two young ladies have said. They, there is, there is one side of this story that's getting out there, and this is not, not, this is the worst part of being a council member, in my experience. This is the worst thing I've had to do. And I, this is not a popularity contest. We are elected to represent the people and do what's right for the city. And I will sleep tonight, knowing that I did that tonight. I took everything that everyone came up to the mic and said today to heart, but I will sleep tonight because I don't have anything to regret. I don't have any more to say. Travis?
Just wanted to say, thoughts and prayers go out to Travis, hope he does okay, snaps back like he does from anything else that ever happens to him. I do encourage everybody to think about, you know, serving on this council. It's not an easy job, you know, it isn't. My term is up, come next election, and I hope to see a lot of names on that ballot. That's all I got.
John?
Well, as usual, thanks to our paid staff. And I'd like to thank all the enthusiastic people that came to the council meeting, and I hope they remember this when it comes election time, and so we don't see any positions that are open with nobody running for. I think it's much better if you've got some people that really want to serve to get out there and campaign and get books and sort of the election. And I don't think the meeting like tonight encourages any of this, frankly, honestly. But this, too, shall pass, and it's, well, I guess, I should mention, Southeast Lynn is going to have a school supply, you know, I think they have pre-registered students calling them up. And school supplies are still providing food to people, and the library is still providing books. They're deciding to pick up and just need to call when they're open part of, I think Monday, Wednesday, Friday, part of the day. So that's all I have.
Are they still taking donations, John, or do they have enough stuff?
Of Southeast Lynn?
Yeah.
Oh, we can always use more food.
I'm talking about school supplies.
Well, school supplies, I don't know. I'm not involved with that program anymore, so I really don't know. And they want, they can sign up so they know how much stuff that they need, so if people want to donate, get involved, call up Southeast Lynn, talk to one of the gals there.
Nate, I just have another thought, too. You know, we did have a large crowd here tonight, probably one of the largest ones we've ever had any of the time that I've been on council, and I was on council before. But I don't know how many people were here. I'm guessing 75, 80 people. But we are a town of over 2,000. So I think that that's worth noting, too.